...
Roll call, please, Buffy. Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. All right, we have some presentations and introductions tonight. Our first one is introduction of our new treatment plant operator, Matthew Ingleman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm pleased to introduce the newest member of the wastewater treatment plant division, operator in training, Matthew Ingleman, or Matt. He's now the second Matt on our staff of seven, so that makes us about thirty percent Matts. He once jokingly said we can call him Hazmat. He's also been called, he's also been called the new older Matt as opposed to the old younger Matt. His Spanish-speaking in-laws call him Mateo. In any case, unlike other Matts, we won't step on him or hang him out to dry, and we'll never brush anything under him. The city is very fortunate to have Matt onboard. He comes with extensive experience in the field. For the past four years, he was the lead maintenance worker at the City of Eureka's wastewater treatment plant. And before that, he worked for the City of Riodell as a senior utility worker. And before that, he worked for California State Parks in a similar role. He's a graduate of HSU and a committed father with a wife and two daughters. Before all of that, he had hair. As a former lead wastewater treatment plant maintenance worker, he brings a much-needed well-roundedness to the team. He's diligent, dedicated, and he has a humble sense of humor. He can hose down plant tanks, pull weeds, weed whack, operate heavy equipment, and assist whenever and wherever necessary. He takes notes in a personal notebook, studying the plant's systems, following the piping, asking questions, trying to learn how it all works. Within a week and a half of his start date, he completed city rounds on his own. The city is extremely fortunate to have him onboard. It's a great pleasure to introduce Matt. He fits right in, almost like a well-placed, well, Matt. I look forward to seeing him develop, and I know that he will excel. Thank you.
Matt?
Good evening. First of all, I'd say thank you for all coming out to meet me. I appreciate that. This is, I'm very touched. I want to thank Chris for the introduction. That was amazing. I do want to say one thing, though. I do have hair, but it's not here. Thank you so much for having me on. I want to thank Chris and Brendan for giving me the chance to work. I look forward to working at the wastewater plant and becoming a better operator. So thank you so much for the city of Fortuna. I look forward to many years of work again. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, another Matt. And Chris, I think you get the award for best employee introduction that I have seen in all my years sitting up here. So, good job. All right, our next introduction is a new community services officer. So Chief, you've got a tough act to follow there.
Good evening, Mayor Long and Honorable City Council. I don't like to concede defeat too often, but yeah, I'm going to agree with the mayor, Chris. That was outstanding and a very tough act to follow. Nonetheless, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce the department's newest employee this evening. Autumn Wilson is a local resident who graduated from Fortuna High School. During high school, she, her interests were, and she was very active in things like FFA and the, sorry, FFA and the, what am I trying to think of here? 4H, thank you. Slow. See, I got some laughs. So, you know, we've been, as a department, the city, we've been holding off, on, on, holding out on this position for almost a year and a half. And, you know, the things that really impressed me as an individual about Autumn is she's an authentic hard worker. So, you know, she has done her share of cowgirling and working on ranches and working in the woods with timber. So she's not afraid to get her hands dirty and, you know, just accomplish some, some hard work. So it's that work ethic and, you know, just her formability that we're looking forward to here in the future. So, without further ado, I'd like to welcome Autumn Wilson up and say congratulations. She has a few words.
4H.
4H, yeah. I would like to say thank you for this opportunity, and I work, look forward to working with the City of Fortuna.
Welcome, Autumn, and thank you, Chief. Our next presentation is an upcoming mandatory drought regulation from the state presented by our Public Works Director, Brendan Berg.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council and everybody here this evening. And yeah, I do have to agree, Chris, that was, that was impressive, we'll just say. So I just want to provide a little bit of an update here. The state of California recently in May passed some drought regulations that will affect the City of Fortuna as an urban water supplier. And in fact, they'll affect the entire statewide array of urban water suppliers equally. So with that, I put together just a little informational presentation here. We're still going to be in kind of a rollout of the regulations and putting public awareness out and working on a website and flyer and things like that. So there'll be more to come, we'll just say. So.
Brendan, I want to interrupt for a second.
Yes.
Watching the meeting from home when I was sitting there with COVID, you cannot hear you on TV unless you're talking in the mics.
Oh, very good. Hopefully, the, oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed. All right, so a little brief background here on the drought regulations that are forthcoming. On March 28th, 2022, the governor released executive order N 722, which outlined mandatory drought requirements in the state that will be required for all urban water suppliers, which Fortuna is. The order passed a vote in the legislature in late May of 2022. And with that honor by June 10th, which the city intends to do, the city as an urban water supplier will be required to enact Stage Two of our Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which we do have as a component of our Urban Water Management Plan, which we just updated last year. So just a little snippet of some of the more major drought measures that the city will be looking to enact and to be educating the public on. As of June 10th, we'll be looking for citizens to limit the use of hoses that don't have shut-off valves or nozzles on them, you know, mostly because you can immediately cease the use of water if you do have a shut-off valve or a nozzle on it. To limit landscape irrigation that causes excessive runoff, like overwatering your grass, let's say. We'll have outdoor watering days, which will be Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday, and Thursday. So that would be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, looking to limit outdoor watering. We ask that people don't wash sidewalks, driveways, or parking lots unless they have to for purposes of health or safety or some other items such as that. And lastly, watering of non-functional commercial turf, which I don't believe we have very much of in the city, but there is some, unless doing so, would also water trees, say the medians or some other areas where we do need to irrigate to keep larger plants or shade plants alive. So with that, I just wanted to throw a few items in there, things that the city will do, and just to give kind of a heads up as to how we'll do our part towards the regulations as well. The city will continue to do functional turf watering at our parks because those, which the state classifies as functional, and that's consistent with their guidelines. So we'll still have nice parks. And the city will still be performing irrigation in the medians to keep the trees alive, although we will be only doing so on watering days. And we will be turning down the irrigation times so that we don't have as much of the runoff going into the gutters. The city will continue to rely on recycled water heavily at our wastewater treatment plant, and we'll see if we can expand that at all. And we'll also be delaying our usual hydrant flushing activities that we tend to start in the summer or the late fall. We'll push that more toward the fall or the winter when rains and other things have started anyway. And lastly, staff will continue to monitor our groundwater resource at our water well site and provide updates to the council with our monthly staff reports. As of now, the water levels in the aquifer are very consistent with what they normally are this time of year. And we have found in the past that drought years don't really have an effect on seasonal low groundwater as just as much, it's more tied to how much the water rises in the wintertime. But we'll continue to provide updates as we have that information. So lastly, one of the major items we'll be doing as part of this is implementing a as robust of an outreach and informational campaign as we can. Last week, we did send an alert on all customer water bills informing them of the upcoming regulations and encouraging them to go on the city's website. We'll be currently working to put together an informational flyer, which can be put in the front of City Hall. We may put it in the water mailing or as a mailer in the water bills, and we'll certainly be putting it on the city website. And lastly, we have worked to put together a water conservation page on the city's website, which outlines the various drought regulations that would be required in the city's Stage Two Water, Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So with that, that is the update and the information I wanted to provide. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but it will be an ongoing effort. And there will be more engagement and information coming out as the months go on. So, thank you very much.
Does anyone from the council have questions for Brendan?
I do. Brendan, just to make sure to alleviate any fears that our water supply is dwindling to nothing. How are the wells as far as our water levels at this particular point?
Yes, that's a, that's a great question, Mike. So I'd like to say that the executive order and the legislative action that was brought forth is a blanket across the state. And there are certainly areas within the state that are having more issues than we currently have, you know, namely ones in the valley or ones that rely on surface water reservoirs. We in the City of Fortuna have not noticed that we really have any major impacts, if at all measurable, to the amount of water we currently have. We take weekly water readings down at the city's well site, and they are consistent with what we have seen before. So, you know, we'll be moving forward still to enact some things on the city side to keep, you know, within the spirit of being conservative with our water and also being responsible. But at this time, we don't really foresee a big impact, if at all, to the amount of water that we have in the ground here.
Okay, thank you. And then the well, the new well is at number five. That's functioning well?
Well done. Yes, it is functioning. It is not actually online yet. We do have continued work to do some sampling for the well and some designs to make sure that we have a well-made connection.
I think that's swell. Are there plans to cut back with regard to the hydrant fills for the water contract haulers that we see that come up to the hydrants and just start filling their, their 10,000-gallon trucks? And we never quite know whether they do in fact have a contract with the city or not. But is there some talk about cutting back some of those?
Most of the ones, at least that the city is aware of, are the contractors that get a meter from City Hall and are doing so for construction purposes. If there are folks that are doing that, that would actually be, without a meter and without the knowledge of the city, that's, you know, not consistent with what they should be doing. And if we did find people doing that without our knowledge, you know, we certainly want to get them to stop doing that.
Okay, so if you, if we see a truck that is pumping water out of a hydrant directly into their truck, say in front of Hummel Tires, which I saw one about two weeks ago, and I don't know whether they had a meter on it or not, but I probably should have called the city to make sure that they were, it was on a weekend, though, so it was a Sunday afternoon.
By all means, you'd be more than welcome to do so, and we can check. We do have contractors. We do rent out meters very regularly for work like that. And so they, they put a metered connection, they do that. We do also have a metering connection at the corp yard that a lot of contractors come to to fill up trucks as well. So.
So don't call on us, we're good.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone from the public have comments or questions for Brendan? I know water is a big concern, but we're pretty good here. Walt, come up to the podium, please.
Yes, Brendan, thank you for that presentation.
Walt, you need to come up to the podium. Yeah. No one can hear you. Everybody watching at home and all the things.
Show off my t-shirt.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. We live at Royal Crest, and we do not receive a water bill directly from the city. So we are not recipients of whatever notices that get sent out by the city. Is there anything in the works to do something about that?
That's a great comment, and thank you for making that. You know, as we put together the informational flyers and things like that, we're going to want to think of places such as Royal Crest or other multifamily housing that we do have, where an individual water bill is not going to cover that. And I'm going to make a note here, and we'll make sure that we make an effort to get that information individually to those addresses.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Brendan, for that presentation. We're going to move on to public comments tonight on anything that is not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes if you want to come up to the microphone. Hi, Katie.
Hello. I'm glad somebody knows me. I'm Katie Garrison, the director of St. Joseph's Food Pantry. We're at 2292 Newburgh Road here in Fortuna. We're one of the seventeen sites for food for people in Humboldt County that offers free packaged food and produce. These food services are for individuals and families who have lower incomes. Currently, we are open on Wednesdays from 10 until 1. However, as of July 2022, we will be open Mondays and Wednesdays from 10 o'clock until 12 o'clock. All registration and food distribution takes place outdoors for the clients and the volunteers' safety. In addition to food for people, we receive food donations from individuals in several stores. For example, last summer Grocery Outlet held a big food drive and collected 20,000 pounds of food for us. And recently, we received about 3,000 pounds of food from the U.S. Postal Workers' food drive. Once again, I would just like to remind you and those listening that the new hours for St. Joseph's Food Pantry on Newburgh Road is going to be from 10 until 12, Mondays and Wednesdays, starting in July. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else have any comments? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. We have six items, including city council minutes, from several meetings, report of dispersments, call for a municipal election, additions to the fee schedule for recreation skating program, adopt Senate Bill 1 transportation funds, and project list for fiscal year 2022-23, and authorize the submission of a 2021 Community Development Block grant. Does anyone wish to pull any of these items?
A.
A? Anyone else? All right, what, Tammy?
I noticed that on the minutes, it doesn't have anything, it says roll call, but it doesn't say who is here and who isn't. And I don't know if that's normal. It would be kind of a good idea on those to put who was absent from the meetings.
Are you talking about the special meetings?
All of them, all of them.
All of them?
Yeah. All, none of them say who, it says roll call, but it doesn't say who was here and who wasn't here. And then on the, the special meeting on 516, it has a reference to Jack Rice, and I think that was Ryan Rice.
Okay, and that was on the 16th, you said?
Yes, that was on the 16th. And that's all I have on those.
Okay, all right, do we have a motion?
To approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion.
With the corrections.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to city council business. Our first item is to approve the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2022-23. Our first item is to approve the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2022-23.
Maybe I'll try this one this time. Excellent. Thank you Buffy for getting that up. And again, it's my pleasure to make a recommendation here tonight that the council adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 City of Fortuna Capital Improvement Program. And that's the five-year capital improvement program. So each year, the capital improvement program, or what we call the CIP, is updated to identify necessary infrastructure improvement projects as well as to coordinate financing, budgeting, and timing of these projects. The program is a guide for identifying and estimating current and future fiscal year projects necessary to maintain the city's infrastructure. This year, a total of nine projects were removed from the CIP and seven new projects were added. As was just mentioned, a workshop was held with the city council on May 16th, where we covered this item in a little bit more detail. And at May 10th, this CIP was adopted as, are found to be consistent with the general plan by the City of Fortuna Planning Commission. So of the five completed projects that were removed from the capital improvement program, there were two road projects, two water, and a wastewater project. After closing out these projects in last fiscal year, we were pleased to see that on the whole, the city was able to complete these projects at or below budget, meaning that the city and our staff is continuing to do a good job of producing accurate budgetary estimates for our projects and being able to deliver them on budget, as you can see over here on the, on the far side of the slide there. So moving over to projects that were added in this fiscal year, there are seven total that were added. On the top of the table, you'll see that we've added three water and sewer maintenance projects that were identified by city staff over this year. We've also added two parks projects, including the Newburgh Park Expansion Project on the new about eight acres that the city acquired adjacent to the existing footprint of Newburgh Park and the Rona Park Basketball Court Rehabilitation Project. And you can see concept designs for both of those at the bottom of the slide on the lower right. Also added are two intersection improvement projects, one at 12th Street in Newburgh and one at Kenmar and Ross Hill Road. Both of these two projects are currently in the design or the environmental phase right now. So over the next 12 months, staff are anticipating being active in a number of construction projects. As shown here in this list, there are, these are kind of the larger ones that we anticipate being active in this year. Of note, you'll see the generators project, which has a contract award recommendation that I'll be making later this evening, the 12th Street LID project, and the police facility replacement project. So also during this next year, staff will be working with various engineering consultants and other professionals to develop various master plans and other engineering design projects, including the city's wastewater upgrade project and the Kenmar Interchange Improvement Project. These efforts are important as they'll lead to future construction phase work within our CIP. And the master plans will result in identifying future projects for the city to work towards to continue to improve our infrastructure assets. So the last slide here is a useful visual to see what types of projects or improvements are being done. This is our budgeting over the next five years by, by project type. As you'll see, the city's wastewater compliance project, or with that project, that wastewater continues to be at the forefront of our, of our project work and project consciousness. The city is also fortunate to be budgeting for major roadway projects using various transportation funds as well as grant funds in this coming year. And lastly, the American Rescue Plan Act is playing a major role in the city being able to deliver on the police facility project, which is, which is huge for the city. So with that, I'm absolutely happy to answer any questions that the council may have. And it is my staff recommendation that the council adopt the 2022-23 fiscal year five-year capital improvement program. Thank you.
Thank you Brendan, any questions from council? Anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to a motion.
I hope it doesn't take five years to get that police station though.
I'll go ahead and move to adopt the fiscal year 2022-2023 five-year capital improvement program and appropriate funding and inclusion of fiscal year 2022-23 projects into the 2022-23 overall budget.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second Buffy.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. We've got a lot of pages to thumb through to get to the next item. The next one is adopt the full and part-time pay rate schedules for fiscal year 2022-23, Resolution 22-2022-19, and 2022-20. Who's taking this one? This is Aaron.
Yeah, Aaron Felmley, our Finance Director, has a staff report. So our, our city clerk put this together, but I'm going to go ahead and present it on her behalf. So the city in 2021 completed negotiations with the Fortuna Police Employees Association and the Fortuna Employees Association. Both of those adjustments for those agreements were effective April 1st, 2022. So no further increases for those two bargaining units were included in the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 pay rate classification schedules. However, at one of our special budget workshops, we did present two options for our part-time pay rate classification schedule. And those options were to implement the 8% quota given to the FEA, to the part-time employees on either January 1st or July 1st. And council chose, council chose July 1st. So those changes have been incorporated into the part-time pay rate schedule attached to this staff recommendation. Also included were changes discussed at the special workshop and those included the addition of an accounting technician position at Classification F-25, the addition of a finance office supervisor position at Classification F-27, the reclassification of the city clerk and human resources manager position to Classification F-59. And then we added a street maintenance to position to Classification F-20. So the fiscal impacts associated with the proposed changes have been incorporated into the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget, which is our next item. And so with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2022-19 and 2022-20. And if there are any questions of staff, I'm happy to help answer those.
Thank you Aaron, any questions?
No questions, but just a general comment. A lot of these business items that we're going over, we've, as a council, have already heard those. They've, they've been introduced in previous meetings. So you're not going to hear a whole lot of questions from us. Doesn't mean we haven't done our job, we just have had those questions answered already. So feel free to step up and ask any questions.
I have a couple. On the part-time pay scale, our recreational leaders are all classified as seasonal. I think we maybe need to take a couple of those off because seasonal workers are only supposed to work a maximum of six months or 1,000 hours a year. And we need people all around to work the recreation programs.
Yeah, I can help answer that. So historically and currently, our, the recreation leaders do primarily the summer fun and kiddie camp programs. And then throughout the summer, or throughout the non-summer times, they pick up the skating program, which is a lot fewer hours. So we do not typically have any recreation leaders over 1,000 hours per year. Because that would be on average, averaging more than 20 hours per week, every single week of the year, which we don't usually see.
Okay, so, but they can work more than six months?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then my other question was on the regular pay scale. The new title change that we're changing to, or to Finance Office Supervisor, it kind of sounds like, I think that maybe that needs to be changed because it sounds like it supervises the whole finance office and that, and Alice doesn't fall under that. I think maybe a more appropriate name for that position might be Front Desk Supervisor because that's actually where she's supervising. That's, I just don't want to be mistaken that she's the whole finance officer or the whole finance department supervisor. That was one of my questions. And then, talking to Merritt a little bit, he was talking about maybe some of this stuff needs to be updated. And so I started looking into it a little bit. And California labor laws require exempt employees to make double minimum wage or $62,400 a year. And so we have three positions that fall under that that are exempt but aren't qualified for exempt positions. And that would be the Recreation Transfer Administrator Supervisor, the Conference Center Manager, and the new position that you just changed to, a supervisor position. None of those fall under the double or double minimum wage. So I don't know if this would be the time to update the, the pay scale or the thing and make it legit, or?
Ryan's got his hand up over here.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem Trent, those, the double the minimum wage are applicable under the California Labor Code. As a public entity, we are exempted from those provisions and instead we fall under the Fair, excuse me, Fair Label Standards Act, which has a much lower exempt threshold than double the minimum wage that California employs through the Labor Code.
Okay. I asked about that, they told me no. Okay, then that's all I had to say.
Anyone else? Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? We have people here tonight, but nobody's chatty. All right, so we will close public comment and we need two motions.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-19 and read by title only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Resolution 2022-19, Buffy?
Resolution 2022-19, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna adopting the full-time classification and pay rate schedules for fiscal year 2022-23. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you Buffy, all right, next one?
Do you need a public comment, are we good?
No, we just did all that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt a Resolution 2022-20 and read by title only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-20, Buffy?
A Resolution 2022-20, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna adopting the part-time classification and pay rate schedules for fiscal year 2022-23. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. Our next item is to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2022-23.
Again, our Finance Director, Aaron Felmley, will be presenting the budget staff report. Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So staff is pleased to present a balanced budget for the general fund for fiscal year 2022-2023. Staff prepared the budget with the intent of providing the maximum amount of services to the community while still presenting a balanced budget. So as Councilmember Losi had said, the council has held two special budget workshops to discuss the proposed budget. The first workshop was held on May 16th, where staff presented the proposed budget and reviewed the general fund revenue and expenditures in depth with the city council. The second workshop held on May 23rd, focused on answering outstanding questions from the first workshop, as well as reviewing in-depth the city's enterprise funds, which include water and wastewater. So a few changes came from those meetings. The first one was to increase overtime expense from our state AB 109 realignment pool fund in the amount of $30,000. And that was for special operations specifically related to AB 109. The second change from the proposed budget was to transition Measure E funding for the Riverwalk Grant Match to just general park acquisition and improvements due to uncertainty in, in the city receiving the Riverwalk Grant. And then the final change, which is going to be another item at tonight's meeting, is to include engineering services for CIP project 9500, which is the vehicle miles traveled project. In addition to these line item changes, some service alternatives were discussed at the special, special workshops. Those included under the Public Works Department, the elimination of three street maintenance part-time workers, and the addition of one full-time street maintenance worker position. Under the Finance Department, the elimination of the Account Clerk III position and Senior Account Clerk position, and the addition of an accounting technician position and finance office supervisor position. And then under the City Clerk Department, the reclassification of the City Clerk and Human Resources Manager position. So all those changes were incorporated into the attached budget to this staff report. And so in summary, the general fund has a net surplus of $24,138. And the general fund and Measure E fund will have a combined total operating uses of $9,909,000. So Measure E, the city's three-quarter cent transaction and use tax monies will continue to fund our two police officer detectives, a community services officer position, our part-time code compliance officer, our recreation program supervisor, and our Parks and Recreation Director. In addition, Measure E will fund a full-time police records clerk position this year. In addition to these positions, Measure E monies will fund the K-9 program, our abatement program, the storm drain maintenance projects, street maintenance projects, transit assistance for seniors, various parkland acquisition and improvement projects, and support to the Fortuna Senior Center for additional senior programs. The one outstanding item from the council workshop was additional funding support as requested from the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $13,000, as well as the additional amount of $5,000 in support for the retail strategies program and $5,000 of in-kind support for the use of River Lodge and Monday Club. So the council has the option to remove the additional support from the budget as part of this item, should that be the consensus of the council. It is staff's recommendation to fund each of those items and that is what has been included into the proposed budget that is attached. So with that, staff is happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Otherwise, it is council's, staff's recommendation to adopt Resolution 2022-21 and adopt the fiscal year 2022-23 annual operating budget.
Thank you Aaron, any questions?
Just a couple of questions. On page nine, the ending fund balance, that does not include any additional PERS liability payments? Just to confirm?
Yes, that, that is correct. So the additional payment that council authorized in March is not included in this, just simply due to timing of that payment.
Okay.
We agreed to wait until like the mid-year budget, right?
Yeah, each year, once we get our final audit and we kind of know exactly where we stand, staff has historically brought that forward for council to decide.
Good, thank you. And then on page 24. I have to get to it myself. On account 7616, if you go across to the 2021-22 estimate, the $49,000 is a, this is the televised meeting costs, a huge increase. Do we know how close we are for the actuals on the current?
So that is the American Rescue Plan Act funds that was put towards the city council chamber upgrades, which is, as you can see, kind of still in progress. So I don't have an updated estimate as far as the cost of that work. But we should have that fairly soon as they wrap up the work that they're doing in, in the council chambers.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions from council? Does anyone from the public wish to comment? Seeing no chatty people still, we'll close public, actually it's public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and back to the council.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-21.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-2022-21. Read by title only, Buffy?
Resolution 2022-21, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna adopting the city of Fortuna's annual operating budget for fiscal year 2022-23. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stan? Council Member Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. And we've got like 100 pages to flip forward to get to our next item, so hold on. You know what page we're going to?
If you do send your email, you get this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. I'm almost there, I think, already. So our next item is authorization to award a construction contract for the Kenmar and Drake Hill Water Systems Generator Project, CIP 9102. And I'm sorry, no, it is not. We are going to receive and file a basic financial statement audit for the year ended June 30th, 2021.
Yeah, sorry, it's me again. So tonight, we are, staff is presenting the final financial statements audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. So our auditors, RJ Riccardi, certified public accountants, was engaged by the City of Fortuna to perform our funds audit. The audit included the examination of the financial records and the financial statements of the City of Fortuna, and the auditor's unqualified opinions stated in part. The financial statements referred to above presented fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information, and where applicable cash flows of the City of Fortuna as of June 30, 2021. So the opinion provided assurance that the city's financial statements are accurate and free of material misstatement. The Finance Department is pleased to present additional information along with the financial statements, which provide detail on the basic financial statements such as the management discussion and analysis. This can be found starting on page three, as well as a statistical section, which can be found starting on page 67. The management discussion and analysis is intended to be a discussion of compliance, risk, and future plans, such as goals and new projects, as well as an analysis of the city's performance to date. Staff would recommend starting here when reviewing the basic financial statement audit report, as this is a good place to get a general overview of how the cities performed over the course of the last year. And then the statistical section provides 10 years' worth of history about the city's finances and operations, and about the city's constituents and economy. And so this is a great place to analyze trends and assist with, and the Finance Department's projecting where the city is headed over the long term. So a successful audit like this is vital to the city continuing to receive grant funding. And so staff is pleased to present this before council. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, it is staff's recommendation to receive and file the City of Fortuna's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions?
I do. Spent several nights of light reading, going through the basic financial statements. And I don't know if it was part of that, but the RJ Ricciardi also provided city council and management report, and along with that, in, I guess, cooperation or with the basic financial statements, were a couple of recommendations that they made. And I just had a question with regard to one of those recommendations, because the one with regard to written accounting, administrative, and fraud procedures manual has been updated, and so we've taken care of that. The other is with regard to deposits and cash receipts. And I don't have any issues as far as with our employees at all, but the recommendation is that the city consider installing security cameras to monitor cash receipt counters and some of those things that we would safeguard our tax money, public tax money coming in, and fees coming in. Have any steps been taken to move forward with that?
A few years ago, staff was in the process when PD was not, didn't have the pod site kind of in sight, and we were looking at reconfiguring the PD site. And as part of that project, we were going to add some security cameras, just looking down kind of where the customers would be standing at the utility front counter. But that project was scrapped, so at this point, we do either need to re-initiate that project just on the city hall side or find another alternative, but.
Okay. And then along with that would be the daily report worksheets being signed off by the drawer operator and supervisor?
Yeah, that has been implemented to date, so we're good to go on that one.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Does anyone from the public have any comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Okay, guys.
It's not a motion. It's just a voicemail.
It's the vote, we have to make the motion to vote on it. It's just written weird. It doesn't say it's a motion. Well, somebody just flip and read the sentence so we can vote.
I think it was just a receive and file.
Yes, but we need to, it's right here.
Receive and file the City of Fortuna's comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending July 30th, 2021.
And that can be done by unanimous consent or motion, either one.
Okay.
I'll move.
Are you second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next item is the authorization to award a construction contract for the Kenmar and Drake Hill Water Systems Generator Project, CIP 9102.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I just want to make it known, I totally would have gone ahead of Aaron there. So next time, you can put me ahead in staff reports again, or try to. So again, thank you again. I have another PowerPoint here for you, and I have a staff recommendation that the council approve and award a construction contract for the Kenmar and Drake Hill Water Systems Generator Project and award that contract to Robert Colburn Electric. So beginning with a brief project overview, the Kenmar and Drake Hill Water Systems Generator Project will include installing two stationary generators with automatic transfer switches at the city's aforementioned water booster stations. This project will benefit the City of Fortuna Water System and our users by eliminating staff response time during power outages to both facilities, and reducing the overall amount of required maintenance that the city staff have to do during power outages. With this project, approximately 85% of the city's water system will now be covered by stationary backup power generation. And as you can see in the figure I have here in the lower right, I just brought up that blue polygon. That's the area that will be included now in backup power generation, which is pretty significant for our water system. So regarding project timeline, this is a federally funded grant project under FEMA, and the city applied for and then received the notice of funding award in February of 2021. In August of 21, the city council awarded a professional services contract to PACE Engineering, and shortly thereafter, we began the design process. In April, we bid the project, and on May 19th, we had a bid opening here at City Hall. And at that time, after opening, it was determined that Robert Colburn Electric is the lowest responsible bidder, and we have reviewed the bids and the full bid package and have deemed the bid to be fully responsive and responsible. So moving on to the project budget, the total bid amount for Robert Colburn Electric is approximately $340,000. Accounting for the funding that we used for the design of the project with PACE Engineering for design and construction administration, the project has a total available construction budget of about $376,000, and therefore, their bid is fully within the city's construction budget. Staff is proposing that the council authorize a contract not to exceed value of $376,000 for this project, which is the full construction budget. And this will provide a roughly 10% construction contingency to cover any unforeseen change orders that could arise during construction. So if awarded this evening, staff are immediately prepared to issue the notice of award to the contractor, and upon receiving their bonding and insurance and contract, we would immediately look to issue the notice to proceed for the project so that the contractor can order the generators. Currently, generator ordering and lead time, like many things with electronics in today's world, have long lead times, and I've had some discussions with the contractor, and they're expecting about 180 days as an order time for the generators. So it's key that we get that one moving quickly. Depending on how the contractor proposes to complete the work, once they know their procurement timeline, we anticipate completion of the construction project sometime during the winter, maybe the early spring of 2023, and we hope to have the grant fully closed out with FEMA in June of 2023. So with that, I'd like to close with my staff recommendation, which is that the council authorize the city manager to award the Kenmar and Drake Hill Water Booster Station Generator Project, which is CIP 9102, to Robert Colburn Electric, and establish a maximum contract amount of $376,600. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Brendan. Any questions? Anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to authorize the city manager to award the Kenmar and Drake Hill Water Booster Station Generators Project, CIP 9102, to Robert Colburn Electric, and establish a maximum contract amount of $376,600.
One second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to award the contract to, forgot his name already.
Robert Colburn.
Robert Coleman. I went past my page too soon. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Our next item is approve a supplemental budget request to develop a baseline determination for vehicle miles traveled pursuant to Senate Bill 743, supplemental budget request for VMT analysis.
Thank you very much. So I do have one more, so please bear with me. So I would like to make a recommendation this evening that the council approve a supplemental budget request to develop baseline vehicle miles traveled, which is also known as VMT thresholds pursuant to the new requirements under Senate Bill 743. So Senate Bill or SB 743 was signed into law in 2013 with the intent to better align California Environmental Quality Act practices with the statewide sustainability goals related to efficient land use, greater multimodal transportation choices, and greenhouse gas reductions. The bill came into effect in July of 2020. SB 743 fundamentally changes the way we, as a city, can assess land use and transportation projects within our jurisdictions as the SEQA lead agency. Specifically, it eliminates vehicular congestion, which we measure as level of service typically, as the operative metric for identifying transportation impacts for SEQA-regulated projects. In its place, SB 743 identifies vehicle miles traveled or VMT as the key impact criterion under SEQA. So VMT measures the number and length of trips on a typical daily per-capita basis. VMT is a useful indicator of overall land use and transportation efficiency, where the most efficient system is one that minimizes vehicle miles traveled by encouraging shorter vehicle trips, more walking and biking, or increasing the use of carpooling or transit or other micro mobility options. Reducing per-capita VMT will reduce per-capita emissions as well, including greenhouse gases, and it is in line with the state air quality and climate change goals. Despite the statewide shift, that project would be required to mitigate for the impact, consistent with regular SEQA conventions, such as would be for utilities or other operative metrics such as that. To mitigate for an increase in vehicle miles traveled, a project may propose to install bike lanes, perform sidewalk infill, implement an employee car share program, or bus passes, or build or provide access to trails, all of which would help to offset the greater VMT metric in the entirety of the city. So as this is new legislation, and the city has not completed a major SEQA project since the adoption in July of 2020, the city currently does not have a standard baseline VMT value or impact thresholds, and therefore, all projects subject to SEQA currently would be required to develop the entire VMT analysis for each project individually. In an effort to streamline and economize the development and the SEQA review process as well, staff are proposing to create and implement Fortuna-specific VMT baseline values and significance thresholds, which is allowable under SB 743. By developing standards and baselines, staff can more easily and uniformly assess impacts on proposed projects, and this portion of the environmental review process should be less costly for developers. To complete the work to develop the VMT baseline methodology and impact thresholds, staff solicited for a scope and fee from the city's on-call traffic engineer, and that scope has been included as attachment in your staff report. So with that, I'd like to end here with my staff recommendation, which is that the council approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $22,500 to develop a baseline determination for vehicle miles traveled pursuant to SB 743. And I know that was a lot of information and news, so I'd, of course, be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brendan. Questions?
I have a question. I think you just answered it, but I just want to make sure I understand it in layman's terms. It sounds to me like you said that this VMT will establish a baseline for the entire city limits of Fortuna, so you don't have to do a traffic impact study per project?
The city will still require a traffic impact study for projects that have 30 or more residential units, which is consistent with the city's general plan. But under SEQA, a traffic impact study on SEQA is no longer required. Now it's moving towards vehicle miles traveled. We will have the baseline numbers developed and the significance thresholds and various other metrics. So similar to doing a utilities analysis, a developer or their representatives are just going to have to assess their impact, but then they can develop it or reference it to all the standards and metrics that we have developed on a citywide level. So it gives them something to instantly compare to and provide an assessment against.
Okay, I guess I, that made it more complicated. Sorry. So what's the value in having this?
If we didn't have it, a developer or their consultant would have to sit down and establish what the per-capita VMT of Fortuna is from scratch. And if they had to do that, you know, they'd have to start, they'd have to get a model, they'd have to develop the full package, they'd have to develop a number. We would have to review and concur with their number, and all that would be the precursor just to compare their other finding to. If we have already done that piece of the work, and we have established what the per-capita VMT is for the City of Fortuna, that big piece of it is already complete, and then all they need to do is add to it the impacts of their project and see what the result is.
Okay, so I heard your example of 30 units or more, but my experience was when we were trying to put a school on Ross Hill Road. So in that context, is it a number of bodies that are going to impact, number of vehicles?
Yeah, I believe there's more to it in that in the general plan, and I did just reference the one that was for dwelling units. But there are, you know, for major projects that are known to, are going to have impacts on the city transportation system, there is a level of it that's discretionary to the city engineer as well.
Okay, thank you.
So does that mean like big projects, like a big business coming into town would have to do that?
The traffic impact study like we currently do or the VMT?
That.
The, so for the VMT, you're going to have, if you have a project that is going towards in the SEQA world, like a mitigated negative declaration, or an environmental impact report, those would be the much larger ones where you're doing the full suite of studies. One of the components of that study is going to include a VMT analysis, where before it would have been a trafficked, a traffic impact study. Now it's a VMT analysis under SEQA. So they've effectively swapped one metric for another within the existing framework of SEQA world.
So if I'm, I'm trying to understand this too. So if a big business came in and they didn't fit in this, does that mean they're going to have to put like bike lanes through the city or around that, or?
They, typically, the, you know, like with many impact mitigations, they're supposed to be proportional and located in and around the project. So let's say if, you know, it could be that there's a housing development, you know, we completed one on Redwood Way this last year, and one of the things that was asked there was to, was to have the dedication for the trail easement that went through there, so long-term, the city can develop towards the goal of our Class 1 trail along the John Campbell Greenway. You know, that's an impact mitigation that in the long term is going to encourage non-motorized transportation, more walking, more biking. So even if they have a project that has an increase to the VMT, which, I mean, arguably, that project wouldn't have a very big one because it's infill, those are the types of things that on the whole would offset the impact they have in that area. So that's, that's, you hit it exactly right. There is going to be just a different line of mitigations that will be looked at under SEQA for projects that have impacts.
What, if you're not understanding, one of the key differences is so now if a new project comes in, they'd have to do the analysis, and then they'd still have to do the mitigation. The difference here would be that the analysis would be done, the thresholds identified, and they'll have, and they'll still have
and they'll have, and they'll still have to do the mitigations, whether it's adding a bike lane or bike facilities or dedicating a trail. So it is already a requirement. The difference would be they could reference the document that the city's put together and the thresholds rather than doing that analysis independently. So they still have to, you know, any new project's still going to have to incorporate those project mitigation measures. This won't change it. It just reduces the burden of putting an analysis on new developments and new projects.
So it could make a development move along quicker and spend less money?
Well, that's the goal. And just to define a threshold, so, you know, what is, what is the value that the city has found to be important? And that's one thing with the legislation, is the city can establish what that threshold is. And so, you know, some projects maybe fall below it, some may be above it, and the city has the ability to identify that, and so that's a good thing. And as this comes back to the council, we'll be able to review it in more detail. But we'll have the consultant prepare a draft, bring it back and share it with the council. So you'll see more, but it's not going to increase the requirements, it's going to reduce the burden of the analysis on the developers. And from a staff perspective, it's really hard when you don't have a identified threshold to be able to say whether they're meeting it or not, or to reference that in an initial study in the, in the SEQA document.
And so the, specifically the VMT will be made a part of the city's general plan?
VMT will be part of SEQA. I would imagine that at a point in the future, like when the city does a general plan update, you know, we may assess it at that time, but performing this work will not make VMT a part of the city's general plan.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would come into play, and again, I'm getting a little bit out of my SEQA area, but when the city does a programmatic EIR for its next general plan, then it would reference the VMT analysis and how the city's working to mitigate the impacts from new development.
One more question from me. How long is it good for?
You know, realistically, this is new legislation, and we would anticipate that what we develop would be the baseline as it would be brought forward for some time. I would imagine that it would take a reasonably large change in the city and our demographic and our layout to warrant the need to go back and establish new.
Okay. It's a supplemental budget request, so I don't want it to be an annual supplemental budget request.
And I do want to note, as the finance director also mentioned, we actually have added it to the budget in this coming year as well. You know, this is a newer change under SEQA, so we thought it important to bring it to the council to provide that level of information. And we do have a consultant, our on-call traffic engineer, who is ready to go on this. And time is of the essence when you have big projects in the works like we have several of, and so we'd like to get moving as quickly as we can, so.
All right, anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $22,500 to develop a baseline determination for vehicle miles traveled pursuant to SB 743.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next item is to review and consider approving the annual report for Fortuna Business Improvement District.
Thank you, Mayor Long, Council. I'll be presenting the staff report, and I just have a... So just, I wanted to give you a little bit in the way of the background. Some things have happened since we last had a workshop on May 12th of this year, which options for the future of FBIT were discussed. Since that time, the FBIT board members tendered their resignations effective June 1st and are essentially the one remaining. The president of FBIT is working to wind down the nonprofit corporation. So with no organization to fulfill the contractual responsibilities, a letter that we sent a letter to FBIT and terminated the contract on May 18th, and anticipation of a likely council decision that would bring FBIT in-house as a city function, or either do that or contract it out with another organization such as the Chamber. We anticipated that the council would likely want to see the annual assessment continue, so we have, we could preserve those two options, which seemed most likely when the council last met. So that is really why the annual report is being presented tonight. It'll serve as the basis for the annual assessment and include the budget and activities from the previous year, any changes to the assessment or boundaries, any budget activities planned for the following year, and other items required in the Streets and Highway Code. And I'll just point out that there are a couple of other items on the agenda for this evening, so the first one is the annual report, but there's also a resolution of intent to levy assessment, and then proposed municipal code changes, which largely reflect the updates to the municipal code to eliminate the nonprofit corporation and have FBIT revert to an advisory body. So our city attorney will be presenting more details on those as we move forward. And I would just like to say, one of the things that we've done to be able to transition the assets and complete the, the annual report is we, the city hired Kalen Stainbrook, who was the executive director for FBIT, to help with the transition of those assets and to complete the annual report. So it's really, I've been really pleased that Kalen, she's just being in a tough situation from seeing that FBIT terminate the nonprofit, which was her employer, and not having a job, to being willing and with a great attitude coming forward and helping the city to complete this transition. It's been really nice to have Kalen on board to help with that. And so that's a temporary part-time position that we filled since the council last met. We didn't expect to have to do that so quickly, but nonetheless, Kalen is here, and she will be presenting that annual report tonight. So with that, I'll hand it over to Kalen.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. I'm Kalen Stainbrook, former part-time executive director of Fortuna Business Improvement District and current part-time temporary city employee. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to present the FBIT's annual report, and I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so just a summary. What is FBIT? Fortuna Business Improvement District is a nonprofit that works closely with the city of Fortuna, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Fortuna, correction, excuse me, business community to stimulate and promote business activity in Fortuna. FBIT is funded by business assessment fees and a dollar-for-dollar match from the city of Fortuna. Its purposes are to promote public events, decorate public spaces, furnish music in public spaces, the general promotion of business activity, and to market to fill available space. So looking back, we've had a lot of organizational change. I've done a little timeline here, starting in August with a new board and interim executive director. Roughly September of 2021, FBIT initiated the audit for fiscal years ending in 2016 through '21. And in October, the interim executive director resigned. In December, we were able to conduct the Al Grey Lighted Parade, and also in December, the audit was completed. In January of 2022, FBIT hired a new part-time executive director, and in April, FBIT provided the completed audit to the city. In May, the board became inactive with the intent to resign, and in June, I was hired on with the city part-time to help with this transition. So it says at a glance, but as you can see, there's a lot there. What we've done to help stabilize FBIT's operations, we started by maintaining regular operations at times with no staff. As I said, I came on in January, so it was largely unstaffed. Starting, we started to organize FBIT's storage unit. We organized the principal office. They hired, again, me. Determined how FBIT intends to fulfill its purposes, we conducted outreach to local businesses and partners, determined core purposes of the organization, and developed and implemented operational policies and procedures. We set clear expectations for board members and executive director, and we worked to develop a quarterly newspaper to inform stakeholders of change and opportunities. Unfortunately, we did not get an opportunity to release that. We also purchased board insurance as they didn't previously have any. So FBIT also worked to improve fiscal controls and responsibility by completing the audits, securing a bookkeeper and transition to QuickBooks Online, closing two extraneous bank accounts, which was the Fortuna Bucks account and the original downtown merchants account, canceled various unnecessary services, therefore saving funds. They worked to fulfill their purposes by producing the Al Grey Lighted Parade, which was largely organized by former board director Erica Thompson. And we also worked with the City of Fortuna Streets Department to maintain and display seasonal banners, provided basic business counseling, and promoted public events and business activity via social media and email marketing program. So looking forward, goals for the future, we'd like to coordinate with partners such as the Chamber of Commerce to reduce redundant services, allowing us to better serve the business community. We'd like to revitalize Redwood Village and Strong's Creek Associations and take an active approach in recruiting board members. We would like to be proactive in educating new and established businesses of what FBIT is and what it offers, and we'd like to create a program to better represent businesses outside of the core areas such as citywide and home-based. Activities for the future, this is just a few that I had in mind that I thought would be beneficial to the community. Excuse me. Revive the kids' free holiday movies and Home-Based Expo, since we didn't have the opportunity to do that this last year. Update banners with lively theme and utilize the floral basket hooks that are already installed on the light poles. Develop and implement a volunteer program, including a clean team to keep the streets clean. Create a new music event, possibly a lip-sync contest with each team sponsored by a business or other music event. Help facilitate events in areas outside of the core areas such as Canton Heights, citywide and core area scavenger hunts, and coordinate with the Chamber in retail strategies to have information regarding commercial space vacancies on hand. As far as proposed changes, there are none. No proposed changes in the boundaries of the district, no changes to rate or methodology from previous fiscal year, and no addition or deletion of core areas. So the fiscal year '22 through '23 budget at a glance, we're very much estimating the carryover amount from last year's fiscal year to be roughly $18,734. We anticipate the revenue to be similar to this year's, which was $61,500 from business assessments, and then the city of Fortuna dollar-for-dollar match. Other contributions were sponsorships for events, which eventually would be an expense as well, so they zero out. The estimated cost of providing improvements and activities for the fiscal year, $103,145. Fiscal year '22 through '23 budget revenue estimate. As you can see, it breaks down what the business assessment revenue is expected from the various core areas, with the city of Fortuna revenue match, the kids-free movie sponsorships, and a music event. And then the expense estimate for the fiscal year, breaks down operations, promotion of events, public decorations, public music, promotion of business, marketing to fill the available space, a part-time employee, and as well as reserves and core disbursement. And that concludes my report. I do want to say thank you to Aaron for his help with numbers and Merritt for his help for reviewing. Appreciate it.
Good job, Kalen. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
With regard to this slide that you have on the very top, operations, $12,230, that includes the audit. Do you know what the annual audit would cost, or do we have an estimate for that?
I did speak with the auditor this morning and confirmed the rough estimate was $5,000 for the one year.
Thank you.
And just one other point, FBIT, they did pay the city back for the audit, the money that was loaned to FBIT to complete the audit for the last five years.
Nice. Any other questions for Kalen? Good job. All right, anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to adopt and approve the FBIT annual report.
Second.
As presented.
As presented, okay. Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to adopt and approve the FBIT annual report as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Our next item is to discuss and consider adopting Resolution 2022-22, declaring the council intent to levy the Fortuna Business Improvement District assessment for the 2022-2023 fiscal year and setting date for public hearing thereon.
So our city attorney, Ryan Plots, will be providing this as well as the next staff report.
Okay.
Thank you. So the Fortuna Business Improvement District is formed pursuant to the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of 1989. It's part of the Streets and Highways Code. And under that enabling legislation, there's an annual requirement that the council adopt a resolution declaring its intent to assess the assessment district's fees for the next fiscal year. And so that's what's before you tonight as part of the resolution of intent. The resolution of intent provides notice that a public hearing will be held at the council's next regular meeting, which will be June 21st, at which time it will conduct a protest proceeding. And businesses subject to the assessment have the ability through written protest in the form and manner required by law to protest against the annual assessment for that particular fiscal year. And so if the assessments, if the protest is successful, the council cannot levy for that particular year and must wait a year before attempting to reauthorize. If the protest is not successful, the annual assessment goes into effect and will be collected in the normal course. And so again, that public hearing will be held on June 21st. The resolution will be published in the manner required by law in a newspaper, general circulation within the city 10 days in advance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So a protest has to be 50% plus one?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions or comments? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I will move to adopt Resolution 2022-22 and read by title only.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2022-22. Buffy?
Resolution 2022-22, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, declaring its intention to levy an annual assessment for 2022-23 fiscal year for the Fortuna Business Improvement District, and fixing the time and place of a public meeting and a public hearing thereon and giving notice thereof. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. All right, our next item is to discuss and consider introducing and conducting a first reading by title only of ordinance 2022-756 to amend certain regulations relating to the Fortuna Business Improvement District.
Thank you, Mayor Long. As the city manager pointed out in the annual report item, before you are some changes to the Fortuna Municipal Code, in particular, Chapter 5.40, which provides regulations for the Fortuna Business Improvement District. The intent of the changes before you tonight are to first, remove any recital in the ordinance and the regulations that the FBIT will be administered through the nonprofit corporation for reasons that were explained during the annual report. The second purpose is to provide some flexibility in the advisory committee that governs FBIT. And as the council will recall, FBIT is managed under the direction of an advisory body to the council. Under the existing regulations, the council has the ability to approve nominations made by the nonprofit corporation, but does not have the ability to make appointments. And so one of the changes is to give the council the appointment authority for seating members to the advisory committee. The second change is to provide some more flexible language in the representation and composition of the advisory committee. Under the existing regulations, the advisory committee must be made up of one downtown core area representative, one representative from the Redwood Village Shopping Center, one representative from the Strong's Creek Plaza, one representative... one representative appointed by the council, which has typically been a member of the council, as councilmember Stanfield is now, one citywide representative, one representative nominated by the chamber, and one person nominated by the remaining six members of the advisory committee. And staff believes that's important, to have that diverse representation on the advisory board. But to have mandatory language makes it difficult at times when there's not a robust volunteer base or applicant pool to make those, meet those thresholds. So, what the ordinance, the proposed ordinance provides is that the council will appoint the advisory committee and will prioritize appointments such that the advisory committee is comprised of those representations on the advisory body. Again, just giving the council to make some exceptions to the representation and composition based on the applicant pool, but also while retaining the representation from the various areas. The second is similar. There's a existing provision in the municipal code that states that the following types of businesses, quote, "shall be represented on the advisory committee", and that's three representatives from the retail industry, two representatives from the professional and service industries, one representative from manufacturing and wholesale, and one representative from the hospitality industry. As with the composition, we believe those are important, to have that representation on the Fbid board. But we do want to provide some flexible language in the municipal code to account for what our actual applicant pool may be in any given appointment year. And so, instead of saying, "The following businesses shall be represented", we are proposing language that states, "The city council, in making appointments to the advisory committee, shall endeavor to make appointments so that the following categories of businesses are represented." The next few changes are to remove some provisions that are no longer applicable, and that is former section, or the current section, section subdivision C, D, and E. C just states that if a person to represent the above business categories cannot be found, the advisory committee shall nominate a representative from one of the other categories. Again, because we're adding the flexible language into the operative provision, that's no longer necessary. Sub D states that the advisory committee members shall serve as members of the Fortuna Business Improvement Corporation. Again, because the corporation will no longer be administering Fbid, that is inapplicable. E stated, states currently that the city council shall approve nominations. Again, the language that we're proposing is that the city council will appoint members to the advisory board instead of approving nominations made by the Board of Directors for the Fortuna Business Improvement Corporation. Some new provisions that we've added. The first is a term limit, which provides that each member of the advisory committee shall serve a two-year term and may be eligible for reappointment. Again, that just allows the council every two years to consider whether to keep the ongoing board or make new appointments, as the council may desire. I also added a provision into the municipal code that allows the council to stagger terms, and that can be done via resolution to, again, provide some flexibility so we don't have to go through a first and second reading for minor changes such as that. And then, Section D, I just added the responsibilities of the advisory committee, as the Streets and Highways Code spells it out, which is that the advisory committee will make recommendations and report to the city council on general expenditures of revenue and the method and basis of levying the assessment, among other responsibilities. This may be directed by the city council. To, one more change, which is in the municipal code currently, the advisory committee appoints subcommittees. There's three subcommittees. Each subcommittee represents one of the three core areas. The current language does not specify how many persons need to be on the special committee, and we thought that was important. So, one of the changes is to include that each subcommittee will consist of no less than three persons, and that each subcommittee will determine how funds are spent within their particular core area and to promote the purposes of the district within the core area. To account for situations where a subcommittee cannot be appointed or has not been appointed, there's a sentence in the Section 5.40060 that states, "The advisory committee shall act as the subcommittee until a subcommittee is appointed, or in the event of a vacancy, causing the number of subcommittee members to be less than three." And so, in that case, the advisory committee will step into the role as the subcommittee. And that's something that we've learned is necessary from the prior few years. For example, the Redwood Village Shopping Center has not had a subcommittee appointed. And so, the municipal code says that the subcommittee shall determine how those funds are spent within that particular core area. And because there was no subcommittee with respect to that particular core area, the advisory committee was left making those decisions for the core area. And so, we just wanted to include an express recital that when the advisor, or the subcommittee is not formed or is not available due to vacancies, the advisory committee will fill that role. Other than that, the regulations are staying the same, including the boundaries of the district, the boundaries of the core areas, and the rates and method of the assessment for the upcoming fiscal year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions?
No question, but just a comment. Ryan, thank you for doing the work on this, and Merritt, you also. I know that you both put a lot of effort into this. I think it's a step in the right direction to get Fbid back on track and doing what Fbid should have been doing all along, so thank you for your efforts.
Any other comments or questions? Anyone from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll go ahead and move to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance 2022-756 and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to conduct first reading of ordinance 2022-756. Buffy?
Ordinance 2022-756, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending Chapter 5.40, Fortuna Business Improvement District of the Fortuna Municipal Code and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Our last business item, second reading of organic waste ordinance for SB 1383.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I'll be presenting the staff report. And again, it'll be a brief summary. There have been a number of workshops on SB 1383 and the requirements of the city. And most recently, staff presented this to council on May 16th and provided a lot of background and reviewed the ordinance in detail. So, some of the key components of SB 1383 require the city to collect and recycle organics. So, a big part of that for the City of Fortuna will be the mandatory collection. It will require mandatory collection from all households of the three bin system, so solid waste, recyclables, and green waste and food waste. And whether or not that goes in the same container or not is still to be determined. The other part is that the city has to develop an edible food recovery program, determine, also, reach out to the community through, and conduct education and outreach so that the citizens are aware of what the new requirements are, and then to change the city's procurement policies. And some of the changes to the Fortuna Municipal Code to require procurement of recycled organic waste. So, staff's recommendation is that the council conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance 2022-755, adding Chapter 8.14 to the Fortuna Municipal Code, establishing the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction regulations, and to implement and enforce CalRecycle Organics Regulations in SB 1383. I do have the presentation that I presented at the last council meeting, and I'd be happy to provide any more information if you'd like more on that.
Any questions? All right, anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
This is along the same line I was talking about before, about Royal Crest. We don't get notifications of this kind of stuff from the city. And there should be a way to do that. Otherwise, we don't know how to do it. So, that's my comment.
Can I ask this speaker a question?
Sure.
So, Mr. Wilson, do you have your own garbage service, or is it collected by Royal Crest right now?
It's, uh...
So, each, if it's individual customers, Recology will be reaching out to each one of the customers, notifying of the mandatory collection. And so, if it was a situation where a mobile home park had, you know, dumpsters for trash collection, then they would be notified and they'd be responsible for complying with the requirement. So, similar to the water conservation, there would be an education and outreach strategy directed at larger commercial and multifamily residential businesses. So, multifamily residential business such as Royal Crest, we'd have to do that direct outreach and education. So, that's a big part of it. And one of the things, this isn't going to roll out immediately. We expect it to go into effect January 1st for the collection, so we've got a little bit of time to get ready for that.
Yeah, we do have our own garbage cans, so...
Yeah, so then, most of the outreach would go to individual customers, and it would, and a lot of that we expect to incorporate in the franchise agreement, and Recology would be reaching out to the customers.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Just one quick comment. I spoke to the city manager earlier, and citizens that do their own self-haul do have an opt-out option, as long as it's not grossly abused. So, just to keep that in mind as we're considering this adoption of another required fee for collection of organic matter. So, for those that are concerned about the increased costs as part of the citizens of Fortuna, you do have a little bit of paperwork you can do in order to exempt yourself from that charge.
Thank you, Jeremy. Anyone ready to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance 2022-755 and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2022-755. Buffy?
Ordinance 2022-755, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending Title 8, Health and Safety of the Fortuna Municipal Code by adding Chapter 8.14, Organic Reduction and Recycling Ordinance. Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to our city manager's report.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Buffy if she could pull up the upcoming meeting schedule, and I just wanted to show a slide of the upcoming meetings. If you can do that. Want me to try that? So, as you can see on the screen, I like to put it up so the viewers at home can see too. The next regular council meeting will be on June 21st, and it's important to make note that that's a Tuesday and not a Monday. That is the normal day of our council meetings to recognize the Juneteenth holiday on, which occurs on the 19th, which is Sunday. The next regular council meeting after that will be on July 5th at 6:00 PM. The next planning commission meeting will be on June 14th at 6:00 PM. The next Measure E committee meeting is not until September at 5:30. And then, our next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be on July 6th at 2:30 PM. And all the meetings now are being held in the council chamber. And one thing I might point out is we are very close, we almost had it together, to do hybrid meetings. And Councilmember Johnson couldn't be here tonight, but you'll see that there's monitors on your desk. We have some new TV monitors up. And so, our hope is in the future that we'll be able to broadcast and use a Zoom platform or another platform to have speakers participate remotely. And so, we're very close, minus just a couple of things, and we didn't want to try to pull it off. Our city clerk is out sick today, so it didn't seem like the first night to do that experiment. But we expect later this week to be able to have that hybrid capacity. So, with that, I don't have anything else to report. A lot of the items that I've been working on are included in the presentations tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Merritt. Anyone have questions for our city manager?
No.
All right. Future agenda items that we haven't already discussed? All right, city council reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one. I sent an email out to the city manager regarding Sharps containers. I don't know if that was something that was...
Yeah, I did, I did see that, and we haven't put anything together yet. But I think there are some locations that we have Sharp, we have Biohazard, I know now, but we will look into that. That's something, if you'd like to see it on a future agenda item.
Yes, please. I just saw that recently, they're almost like the size of a mail, a small mailbox. And then, I looked them up and found them on Overstock.com for fairly reasonably priced. So, I thought, well, if we're going to do something like that in our public spaces, then now's the opportunity.
Yeah. So, we'd be happy to bring, we'd be able to put that on a future agenda item. And I'll just note, one of the other things that we're thinking about is some of the parcels that the city owns. There's three parcels that are designated, one at Drake and Penn and one at Spring Street, that I'd like to bring back and get some direction from the council on a future agenda for putting out an RFP to develop those for multifamily.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on to council reports, Mike Losi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 18th of last month, we had a LAFCO meeting. We completed the Riverside Community Services District, MSR, that's a municipal service review, and the Sphere of Influence. And we expanded the Sphere of Influence to several residences that already had service but weren't within the sphere. The commissioners passed the final budget, which will see a 3% increase to member agencies contributing to the budget. And the budget was passed without any comments from the member agencies. We received a preview of the proposed annexation of the Sprawl Creek Fire Department, being annexed to the Garberville Fire Protection District, along with a proposed special parcel tax, which will expand both the area and service of the Garberville Fire Protection District. They already provide service for a lot of area that is kind of in the no-fire district zones down there. So, they provide a lot of medical service as well as fire response. So, hopefully, people down there will see that as being very important. Once that application is submitted, then LAFCO can start that process on the annexation. On May 26th of last month, we had a report, a RCEA meeting, Redwood Coast Energy Authority. We had a report on power procurement and market challenges, particularly with one project, Sandrini Solar, and then others as well, the Hatchery Project, Fairhaven Battery Storage, and several others. There are a lot of concerns about the whole mark, from the, across the whole market with regard to global issues as far as supply chain disruptions, inflation, shipping costs, energy-specific issues. And I know Mike Johnson would want to know about this, with regard to the U.S. Department of Commerce probe in the solar panel manufacturing with regard to the China probe. You might have read that in one of your national publications. There are huge variables involved, so it's anyone's guess as to where all this is going to land. But suffice it to say, energy costs are going to be going up. They will be increasing. We, under the CCE business, we approved an MOU with the Sonoma Clean Power CCE to formalize an agreement for collaboration on wind and, solar wind and geothermal energy transmission zones. And there are advantages to both the RCEA as well as the SCP to cooperate. And then, we looked at options for future hybrid meetings, all going back to in-person... while going back to in-person meetings. And there are several locations that we talked about, and staff is looking into the pluses and minuses of each location. We authorized a couple of new positions and upgraded one position in the RCEA organization, which should provide better success on grant procurement. We discussed and approved the 2022-23 fiscal budget, which saw revenue adjusted down by 4%, costs adjusted up by 11%. Interestingly enough, the personnel costs account for only 4.7% of the total budget, which fiscal year 2023 looks like it's going to be right around $91 million. And of course, you probably read about the offshore wind lease agreement. It was published on the 31st. So things are moving forward on that wind generation project, which is going to really be a standout for Humboldt County, even though it's quite a few years down the road. We'll wait with anticipation on that.
Thank you, Mike. Jeremy?
Well, we don't have Mike Johnson here, and I'm going to channel my inner Dean Glasser tonight.
Three minutes.
It's all good, it's all good.
Here's my timer.
Yeah, get your timer.
Three minutes.
Since Mike Johnson's not here, I want to go ahead and mention that I got this in the mail today. This is an entry form for the 101st Rodeo Parade, and the theme for this year is the Western Fun along the 101. So if you haven't seen their hats, it's a 101 symbol, and it's a pretty cool hat this year, black and white. But a couple of things to, you know, because the Dean part is, let's keep our kids safe because it's summertime. And the parade starts at 11 this year, not noon, so that's a big change. And it's illegal, actually, to throw objects from a moving parade unit. So please, if you have items that you'd like to give to your kids, have somebody walk along the side of your floats and hand out candy or prizes or whatever. So there's the, and congratulations to the graduates. Getting back on my topics here. Summer fun, please contact the Parks and Rec Director for Summer Fun Program because our kids are graduating from all the elementary schools and so forth. So that program's coming available. And then finally, Dean? It's Dean Day, so we're going to say, "God bless America and God bless our troops."
Good job. Tammy?
Okay. I had a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting, and basically, we worked on the budget. This, I guess this is budget time for everybody, and approved their budget. Tomorrow is Election Day, so get out and vote. It's important to have your vote counted and heard. And speaking of Dean, Dean had a very nice celebration of life services with full honor guard and everything. That was very nice. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Tammy. Redact meeting was canceled, so I just had all the special workshops that we had for the city council this Thursday and Friday. Those of us who sit on League of California city committees will be having meetings, mine attend to have been lasting three hours. So I don't know if I'm looking forward to that or not, but that's coming up. And with that, I think that's all our city business tonight. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.